So, good evening, everybody. Thank you tuning in tonight with our meeting that means a lot to us. So, please stand and join me for the opening prayer from Vice President Lesher, please.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. This past Friday, we gathered as council in front of the courthouse. We gathered as council in front of the courthouse. I'm sorry, we've got a repeat echo in the background there.
We've got some feedback. So, Mr. Lesher, would you say open your prayer if you can, please?
I'll do so. This past Friday, we gathered as a council in front of the courthouse in recognition of the 500,000 Americans who've lost their lives on the one-year anniversary of the first COVID case in Maryland. And we marked those 29 lives of Talbot County citizens who have been lost. And this prayer is excerpted from the one that Reverend D'Artagnan Hines of Scotts United Methodist Church gave on that occasion, which was a powerful prayer. I'm only going to give you a small section, a segment of it. "O God in heaven, hear us as our hearts cry out to you for the loss of those who will never be mere numbers to us. They are our beloved parents, siblings, grandparents, aunts, uncles, spouses, children, and extended family. They are our beloved fellow Americans who were suddenly wiped out by an invisible enemy. Merciful God, we ask you to bless all those now shouldering the heavy burdens from so great a loss. And now turn our council's hearts and minds to the task of governance that we may carry our duties with justice and compassion. Amen."
Thank you, Mr. Lesher.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Lesher. Okay, council. That was great, Mr. Lesher. That prayer was well done. Okay, next is the agenda. Council has an agenda from March 9th. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Is there a motion? Yes?
I would like to amend the agenda, make a motion to amend the agenda to remove Item B, C, and D under the county managers report due to they came a little bit early and are premature at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. DeVio, Mrs. Price.
Yes, and also, we have item number, where did it go?
I think it's nine.
Nine. The discussion of pending general assembly legislation, we don't have any this evening. So, if anybody was going to hang around waiting for us with bated breath to do that, we don't have anything to discuss. So, I would suggest we remove that as well.
That's good, Ms. Price.
So, I'll amend my motion to delete Items nine and then Items B, C, and D under the county manager's report.
That sounds good. Is there a motion in a second to approve the agenda as? Madam Secretary?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you, council. Okay, next on the agenda is the minutes from February 23rd. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, the chair moves that the minutes be accepted by unanimous consent. Now, we're going to move on to dispersments from March 2nd and March 9th. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the dispersments?
So, I only have March 2nd and Granicus.
March 2nd, okay. Ms. Morris, is it March 9th, too?
It should be. They might not have posted, Ms. Moran, I'm not sure.
I'm just showing a second, Ms. Callahan. Okay, okay.
I put them in there, but I don't know what happened to them.
Okay, so for the time being, let's just do March 2nd. So, that's what everybody has. Is that okay? Okay, so let's just do March 2nd. So, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the dispersments? Okay, on March 2nd. Hearing none, the chair removes that the dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay. All right, so we are on to our next proclamation. Mr. DeVio, I was going to see if you wanted to speak about this. You were so kind to support this. And then that way, you can say a little bit, then Madam Secretary has to put it into the record.
Certainly, thank you. I appreciate the council allowing me to put this proclamation or support it on to the agenda. This is Endometriosis Awareness Month. We have one speaker with us, Shannon Hanawald, who has presented her story to a few other councils and commissioners around us. And she has just a short little story that she would like to present to us. And she's on the, I want to say on the line, sorry, on the webex, I guess. So, Shannon Hanawald, would you like to introduce yourself and tell a little bit about this?
Sure, absolutely. My name's Shannon, and I actually live in Denton. I've been suffering with endometriosis for 20 years, well, over 20 years. I'm going to read my story really quick. My pain started when I was 15 years old in 1999 and was literally one of the worst periods in my life. The best way to describe the pain is it's like someone is carving out your insides while stabbing you in the ovaries with a million knives. Every doctor that my parents took me to only did ultrasounds, MRIs, and physical exams, which in turn showed no problems except for some variances. For five years, my parents were told I was lying to get out of school, and because the test showed nothing, they believed the doctors. There were days when I was in so much pain, I couldn't get out of bed and was so physically sick, I would just lay on the bathroom floor. It not only affects your physical health, but your mental health as well. When I was 19, I finally found a doctor that would listen to me. As soon as I told him my symptoms, he knew it was endometriosis, and he scheduled the first of my 12 laparoscopic surgeries. And sure enough, that's exactly what I had, stage four endometriosis. I finally had an answer as to why I felt so horrible, and I knew that I would make sure no other girl or woman would have to go through what I experienced. I talked about it and told people my story. There is no cure for endometriosis. There are treatments, but nothing will ever completely take it away. I knew I had to help other women with this disease since most people don't know anything about it. Thankfully, over recent years, it has become better known because of celebrities sharing their experiences. Even though that was a hard part of my journey, the worst part is the infertility. All I wanted my whole life was to be a mom. Being told at 15, you will probably never have children is heartbreaking, especially when they can't give you an answer as to why. At 21, I was given my first miracle, and I say miracle because I didn't have to have any intervention, and I have absolutely no idea why. However, as I got older, I knew the likelihood of having another child would diminish with each passing year. When I got married in 2015, we knew we would need fertility treatments, so we started our journey with Shady Growth. Through fertility treatments, I became pregnant in 2016. Unfortunately, nine weeks later, we lost that baby. It was just another thing that endo had taken from me. We were thankfully able to get pregnant again in 2017, and our son was born seven weeks early. My doctor said if I attempted to get pregnant again, it would be harder and I would become more high-risk. So, I unfortunately had to have a hysterectomy, which took away any more chances of building our family. I was lucky because a lot of women aren't able to have children when they have endo, and I am eternally grateful for my two boys. My heart breaks each time I hear of a woman with endo unable to have children, mostly because their diagnosis took so long that it destroyed their reproductive organs. This is why we need to spread awareness so other women's dreams aren't crushed. However, it is still not very well diagnosed or known about, especially on the eastern shore. All of my doctors are over an hour away, and I need to raise awareness about this horrible disease to help other girls and women know they are not alone. It needs as much attention as possible because it is one of the most painful diseases anyone could have. It's not assuring when you go to the doctor and you know more than they do, and they ask you questions about it. I need to make sure that my nieces or future granddaughters do not ever experience the horrible treatment I have. I need to make sure that our citizens and doctors on the shore are well-educated about this disease. It's a horrible feeling when the people you love the most can't help you or can't understand how you feel. I've become an ambassador for the Endometriosis Association to help raise awareness for this disease, especially on the shore. The only thing that I ask is that if you hear about someone with endometriosis, you stop and listen to what they have to say. Just because you can't see their disease on the outside doesn't mean they aren't struggling on the inside. That is my story. I just really want to thank you again. It's so important to me to raise awareness about this. I've had so many women reach out to me because they felt like they were alone, and I don't want anybody to ever feel like that again. So, I just want to do everything I can to help raise awareness so other people don't have to fight this. I know it's a hard thing to discuss because it's such personal information, but if we don't talk about it, then nobody else is going to know about it, so.
Exactly. Well, thank you. You're an inspiration to all of us, that's for sure. And I really appreciate you sharing that. It takes a lot of courage for somebody like you to come out and tell us your story. So, I want to commend you. And like you say, you have a couple of kids now, so you're very blessed.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, council, does anybody want to say anything?
Mr. Callahan, very briefly.
Yes, yes.
If the purpose of this is to raise awareness, you should know that it already has because my wife made me look this up a bit. And so, I appreciate the education that I've received through this opportunity. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So, Ms. Moran, would you mind reading that and put that into the record, please?
Sure. Proclamation, Endometriosis Awareness Month, March 2021. Whereas endometriosis is a disease affecting at least one in 10 women of reproductive age whereby the endometrium, a type of tissue that normally grows in the uterus, also grows outside the uterus. And whereas many of the estimated 200 million women worldwide who have endometriosis live with debilitating chronic pain and fatigue, on average experiencing a delay of up to 10 years between the first symptoms and diagnosis, with between 30% to 50% experiencing infertility. And whereas although endometriosis can affect every organ of the body, even the eyes and brain, at the present time, the disease can only be definitively diagnosed via a laparoscopic surgical procedure. And healthcare providers must focus on managing the symptoms of the disease with various treatments. And whereas the first worldwide endometriosis march took place in 2014 with events held in more than 40 countries. And by 2018, 63 countries around the world were participating in the annual event, which has been sponsored by the American Medical Association, the American College of Obstetricians and Gynecologists, the American Society for Reproductive Medicine, the Society of Laproendoscopic Surgeons, the International Federation of Gynecology and Obstetrics, and the European Society of Human Reproduction and Embryology. And whereas there is a need for further research and increased funding for research of endometriosis, which would hopefully lead to earlier detection, the discovery of the cause of the disease, a reliable, less invasive, and less costly way to diagnose the disease, more effective ways to manage symptoms, and a cure. Now therefore, we, the county council of Talbot County, do hereby proclaim March 2021 as Endometriosis Awareness Month in Talbot County, and urge all citizens to help increase awareness of endometriosis and the importance of diagnosing this disease, which to date has no known cure, given under our hands in the great seal of Talbot County this ninth day of March in the year of our Lord 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Moran. Good job with that. So, like I said, Shannon, I really appreciate everything that you've done, making everybody aware, even myself, you know. So, does anybody have any comments or anything? We really appreciate you sharing your story with us.
I'll make a motion on resolution, Mr. Callahan.
Okay.
A second.
Okay, I've got a motion in a second. Could you call the roll, Ms. Moran?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, council, let's move on to presentation of the Delmarva Community Transit 2022 Annual Transportation Plan with Santo Grande and the legend, and the legend and only, only one, Andy Hollis. So, Andy, could you please get in front of the camera here? You know, it's a big problem, I can't see you. You know, so if you want money, we're going to have to see you. I've been looking for this all day long, you know what I mean? Awesome. Okay.
I don't even know why I came.
Oh, we need you. We need you. Don't worry about it. Don't think that.
Need them big time.
Yep, exactly. No, we'd love you to death. So, go ahead, buddy, it's all, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. It's great to see everyone again so quickly. But we are dealing with, this is the annual transportation plan. Last time I was before you, a week ago, or we talked about the funding that is direct from your funds to our budget, which helped with the transportation match, et cetera, et cetera. But this is the plan that goes in, that we receive guidance from the state of Maryland, we follow their information, and then we propose this plan that goes to the state. You'll have to sign off on it, and it'll go to the state. I'd like to say that Andrea Waters is also on this call somewhere. She's our grant administrator, and she will be happy to answer any questions also. But as you can see, we're asking for operating funds total. Now, we can go through the whole budget in a sense briefly, it'll be very brief. But our operating program under 5311, which is Rural Public Transportation under the FTA, Federal Transit Administration, the total for that request would be $682,186. And that funding would be divided, this is what we talked about when we come before you, about there's a federal match, a state match, and the local match. The federal-state match is $445,663. The local, which is contributions that we ask you all for, and Ken Caroline, we have to provide $236,523 of matching funds in order to draw down the federal-state dollars. If we don't match it with cash, that's a true cash match. If we don't give it the true cash match, they will not fund us that. For every dollar we don't pay them, we lose about three. So, at least two and a half. So, and then SSEP is a completely state-funded program. There's no federal match to that. It's completely state-funded. And that was, that began probably 25, 30 years ago, and it really hasn't grown much over the years. But that provides door-to-door service for seniors and some people with disabilities. So, it was additional funds that were requested just to help, mostly advocated through the senior programs over the years. But it's basically shared from the senior and disability programs. And again, that's $353,552 from the state, and the match is $120,0217. Again, that's part of the match that we request from you earlier this month. Then there's an ADA, and Talbot has ADA services because you have a fixed route, and we provide that fixed route. We provide a complimentary service called Americans with Disabilities Act, and that is done in Talbot County. So, that's, they're the routes, they're the schedule, they're the demand response programs combined. And then, we were with you earlier last week, and we talked about the capital match, so capital program. And so, because we're not, this program, this grant, we will not be requesting federal and state matches for vehicles. But we are asking for money for preventative maintenance. So, we're requesting $30,000 that's shared among the three counties for preventative maintenance for the vehicles. So, and that's in the form of this state providing $24,000 for local services, and we would then match it $6,000 to bring it a total of $30,000. So, that's our request. And the federal-state funds will be $863,215. Local, which is a matching fund, will be $367,184. And then the total transportation budget for the three counties combined will be $1,230,399. And your county is the administrating county, so that's why we come to you and present the entire budget to you. And we do appreciate that service you provide. It's a great, you do a great job providing that administrative oversight. Angela has been fabulous to work with over the years, and you all have, and Andy when he was over there. So, you all have been extremely helpful to our organization. You've helped us grow. You've helped us provide a service to your community, and we're here to serve. So, anything we can do to assist, don't hesitate to ask us. We'll answer anything about quality and how many services and how many trips we're providing. Whatever we can do, and any information you request, we will be happy to give to you.
Thank you. Thank you. Santo, you change a lot of people's lives with the service you guys provide, and I really appreciate it on behalf of the council. So, Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read it into the record, please?
The administrative resolution?
Yes.
A resolution authorizing Talbot County to file an application with the Maryland Transit Administration of the Maryland Department of Transportation for a Section 503, 504, 5307, 5309, 5310, and 5311 grant under the Federal Transit Act. Whereas the Maryland Transit Administration is a designated recipient in Maryland for grants under the Federal Transit Act. And whereas the administrator of the Maryland Transit Administration of the Maryland Department of Transportation is authorized to make grants to counties and to local governments for a mass transportation program of projects. And whereas the contract for financial assistance will impose certain obligations upon the applicant, including the provision by the contract of the local share of the project costs in the program. And whereas it is required by the United States Department of Transportation in accordance with the provisions of Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, that in connection with the filing of an application for assistance under the Federal Transit Act, the applicant gives an assurance that it will comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and the United States Department of Transportation requirements thereunder. And whereas it is the goal of the applicant, the minority business enterprise being utilized to the fullest extent possible in connection with this project, and that definite procedures shall be established and administered to ensure that minority business shall have the maximum construction contracts, supplies, equipment contracts, or consultant and other services. Now therefore, be it resolved by Talbot County, Maryland, the filing of the aforesaid application be endorsed, and be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be sent to the Maryland Transit Administration of the Maryland Department of Transportation. Now therefore, the county council of Talbot County, Maryland hereby endorses this resolution, thereby indicating approval thereof, given under our hands in the great seal of Talbot County this ninth day of March in the year of our Lord 2021.
Mr. Callahan, thank you, Ms. Morris, as a point of order, Mr. Callahan, I believe we have to go ahead and accept and approve the transportation plan, the FPR 22 transportation plan. I don't think you took a vote, you took a vote to do that. So, as a point of order, you might want to go back and do that first before we go ahead and introduce a resolution.
Okay, Mr. Pack, no problem. So, Ms. Moran, can you take a, I'm putting a motion to accept the plan?
I'll help you out, Mr. Callahan. I will make the motion to council if we go ahead and accept the 2022 Delmarva Transportation Plan.
DeVio, I'll second that motion.
And we got a motion in a second to accept the plan? Ms. Moran?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Pack, I appreciate that. Okay, no problem. So, council, let's open it up to council comments. Somebody's got to say something.
Well, this is pretty standard, Mr. Callahan. I mean, the administrative resolution regarding the transportation plan, it's sort of performer. Mr. Grande has come in for counsel each year for this to be entered into the record. So, I don't see any difference from year to year in what's been presented.
Okay, okay. So, Ms. Moran, can you, we'd like to go ahead, and I need a motion in a second.
Mr. Callahan, as a point of order, this is just introduction, I don't know whether you want to hand.
Oh, that's right, that's right, that's right. Yeah, that's right, okay. All right. Okay, so, go ahead. Did you say something?
No, I didn't know whether you want to do a roll call for the introduction.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was getting ready to do. Madam Secretary, can you take a roll call, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Okay, all right, everybody.
Mr. Callahan, I will make, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mrs. Price.
I was just going to say, as this administrative resolution is eligible for a vote this evening, so I'll make a motion that we go ahead and take action on the resolution.
I'll second that, Mrs. Price.
Ms. Moran, we got a motion in a second to go ahead and vote on it.
Okay. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carried. Were you getting ready to say something a few minutes ago?
No, sir, Mr. Callahan.
I got you, I got you. Come on now, you got your buddy in front of you, you got to say something, you know what I mean? It's not that many times we got him in front of us, you know? So, look at it, look at it. I love him to death, you know? So, guys, I can't thank you enough. All kidding aside, we really appreciate everything you do for us. You know, transportation's everything around here, so really appreciate all the hard work. And all kidding aside, Andy, really appreciate the hard work you're doing and all the stuff you're helping us with, and all the stuff that's coming up for here in Talbot County and getting creative on some of the stuff that's upcoming for the public. So, you guys, you guys are doing it all, and you've got... So, you guys, you guys are doing it all, and you've got your right-hand lady up in the corner here. What is your name, I apologize?
Andrea.
Sorry, I was.
Yes, that's no problem. I didn't want, Andrea, Ms. Waters, I didn't want to forget you at all, because you might be the backbone of both of them, you know what I mean?
Well, I'm the closest grant.
Exactly. I can't forget you, I can't do that, so.
Thank you.
But, you're welcome, thank you for everything, so. Okay, guys. All right, okay, thank you.
Thank you, it's great working with you.
Okay, thank you, guys, see you soon.
All right.
Bye.
Okay. All right, council, let's move on and see if I can handle this introduction of legislation here, okay? Councils, okay, Ms. Moran, would you please read the title and the bill into the record? That'd be great.
A bill to repeal official zoning map forty-one of Talbot County and reenact the same with an amendment changing the zoning district of a portion of tax map forty-one, parcel sixty-eight, remaining lands and lots one, two, and three, consisting of two-point-zero-two-nine acres of land, more or less, from the Village Hamlet, VH zoning district, to the Western Rural Conservation, WRC zoning district.
Thank you, Ms. Moran, okay. Tony, are you with us?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, I'm probably gonna, you know, kind of lean on you a little bit, I believe you've been working with Mr. Peter Cotter, is it Cotter?
Yes, and I believe Mr. Cotter is also on the phone call here.
Oh, he is, there he is. How you doing, Mr. Cotter? Okay, so you want to go ahead and bring us up to speed on this, that'd be great.
Sure.
Yes.
So, this is a zoning map amendment, and the properties in question are in the Village of Royal Oak. And this is a request to go from a village zoning designation to a Western Rural Conservation zoning designation, which is a less intense zoning designation. And so this kind of zoning map amendment follows what is called the change or mistake analysis. So, back in twenty eighteen, the County Council did a comprehensive zoning update, and since this request is occurring outside of that comprehensive cycle, it's considered a piecemeal rezoning. And so through the process, the planning commission looked at this first, and the planning commission considered it and found that it met the standard for change or mistake, and so has recommended to the council that the council move ahead, and that's where we are with the introduction of this legislation. So I would just turn it over to Peter, if Peter has any comments that he'd like to make, he's representing the applicant here, which is Moore's Road LLC, the owner of the property.
I got you. Well, welcome, Mr. Cotter. You can turn, can you, would you mind turning your mute off, or on, I should say? Can you turn your mute on? Still can't hear you. Is your mute button down at the bottom?
No, it's off.
There you go, there you go. Yeah, we got you now, we got you.
Good.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry about that.
No, you're fine. So I do represent the applicant, Moore's Road LLC, and Mitch Cooper Smith laid out the request fairly well. Basically, the purpose of the request is twofold, in that the request to change the zoning, we believe that the original zoning of the Village Hamlet designation is, was a mistake at the beginning, because the Western Rural Conservation Zone allows for more, protects less intense use, and also provides more protection for sensitive areas such as wetlands, and the lands that we're asking to be rezoned are predominantly wetlands and other sensitive areas. So we do believe that that change would be beneficial to the area at large, and it also has the side effect of allowing for one additional lot to be built on the remaining lands while still providing those additional protections to the sensitive areas that comprise the lot. So, that's the, that is the basis for the request, and as we, as Mr. Cooper Smith laid out, we believe that it meets both the change and mistake rule for the reasons put forward to the planning commission earlier this year.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cotter.
Thank you very much.
That's good, that's good, that's good. Okay, Tony, you good?
Okay.
Okay. Council, because we are meeting virtually, in a virtual environment this evening, I am asking the Madam Secretary to please conduct a roll call for introducing the legislation.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Leshaw?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you, council. Ms. Moran, would you please announce the bill number and the public hearing date and time for the legislation?
Yes, this will be known as Bill Number fourteen-seventy-one, and the public hearing will be held on Tuesday, April thirteenth, at six-thirty PM.
That sounds great. Okay, council, any, anything else on that? Okay, Mr. Cotter, appreciate it.
Thank you.
That sounds good. Okay, so we've read it into the bill into the record. Madam Secretary, will you please read the title and the bill into the record?
A bill to amend Chapter one thirty-four of the Talbot County Code Roads Ordinance to authorize the establishment and operation of a road repurposing facility.
Great. Okay, Tony, you're still here, so you want to go ahead and provide, council, a little bit of update on what we're doing here, so everybody understands it?
Sure. So, this piece of legislation, the purpose is just to lay out very clearly in the roads ordinance, that the Roads Department has the authority to establish the repurposing facility, which currently is out on Route thirty-three outside of Easton, that's the planned location. And so, this just lays that authority out for them to engage in that activity, and it also makes, it also sets up the operation as an enterprise fund, meaning that from an accounting standpoint, it would operate independently of the other county funds, so sort of like the airport, where any revenues that it generates are accounted separately and within the roads repurposing facility, and same thing for any expenses and costs.
Okay, that sounds great, that sounds great. Welcome, welcome, my Warren, how you doing, Mr. Edwards?
Hello.
How you doing?
Good, thank you.
Good, good, good. You want to say a few things, or?
Um, I just look forward to the future with this, I believe it's going to be a great thing for the Roads Department, for the county, and even for the residents and contractors.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, I agree, so. Okay, council, once again, because we're virtually in environment this evening, I would ask Mrs. Moran to please conduct a roll call to introduce the legislation.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Leshaw?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Would you also please be as kind to read the bill number and the public hearing date and time, please?
Yes, this will be known as Bill Number fourteen-seventy-two, and the public hearing will be held on Tuesday, April thirteenth, at six-thirty PM.
Sounds great. Okay, I really appreciate that. Thanks a lot, Tony, and thanks a lot, Warren, appreciate you being here with us and getting that started up, thank you.
Thank you all for your help.
Okay, our fearless leader here, okay? Mr. Stan, you're on board, buddy.
Thank you, Mr. Council President and members of the council. I have tonight with me Preston Pepper and Cassandra. I have a number of issues for you to go over. The first is the Boarding Committee appointments, requesting council consideration for the Economic Development Commission, requesting the appointment of Dr. Clifford Coppersmith to the Economic Development Commission as an ex-officio member.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Got a motion and a second, Madam Secretary? You call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Leshaw?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item I have is a request for a letter of support of the historic Easton Incorporated grant application to the Maryland Historical Trust for FY twenty-one capital grant for preservation of the historic Ashbury United Methodist Church Building located eighteen South Higgins Street in Easton. Historic Easton Incorporated is requesting a letter of support from the County Council for the grant application, amount of one hundred thousand dollars for FY twenty-one, and it requires no county funds.
I have a letter of support.
I'll second it.
Okay, Madam Secretary, we got a motion and a second, it. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Leshaw?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
I have a second request from the Historic Easton Incorporated for the same project, an application to the African-American Heritage Preservation Program for FY twenty-two Capital Project Grant for the preservation of the historic Ashbury United Methodist Church Building located eighteen South Higgins Street in Easton, an amount of one hundred thousand dollars, and it requires no county funds, again, they're asking for a letter of support.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Got a motion and a second to move forward with the grant. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Leshaw?
Aye.
Thank you. The next two items I have are referring to the Frederick Douglass Park. So the first one, I have both Preston here and Cassandra. The first one, Parks and Recreation, requesting council approval to apply for and if awarded, accept a grant from the Maryland Heritage Area Authority to continue work on the Frederick Douglass Park, on the Tuckahoe. The capital grant will be the amount of one hundred thousand dollars to include designing and planting a pollinator meadow, creating the beginnings of a trail system around the perimeter of the park, and building two viewing platforms to see the Tuckahoe. The grant does require a one-to-one matching funds, and the funds have been requested in the FY twenty-two budget. Preston is here to answer questions and provide any more detail. Preston?
Hi, this is, this kind of dovetails onto what the master plan that LSG is hopefully finalizing at the end of this month. This would be the Phase One process, this is some trail system, two scenic overlooks, and the pollinator meadow. So, again, this is the first step in this project. Mr. Pack obviously was, you know, instrumental on this board, so. This and, both this grant and Cassandra's grant kind of go hand-in-hand with one another. Hers has interpretive items that go along with these capital items.
Okay, thank you, Preston. Cassandra, you want to say anything?
Sure. So this is part of a long-running project that we worked on with our consultants, LSG Landscape Architects, Michael Marshall Design, and The Design Minds. And as they laid out Phase One in the interpretive plan, which is done, and again, we're waiting on the master plan to be completed, that is being paid for with MHA grant. And so we are taking steps to add some amenities to the park. As COVID has taught us, people want to be outside, these assets make this park more useful, the trails, the overlooks, it's just the next step in the park planning process. I applied for an interpretive grant, which are a non-capital grant of fifty thousand dollars, which would allow us to add interpretation to the pollinator meadow and to the overlooks and the trails, and also to redesign our website, the Frederick Douglass Park website, and also the FrederickDouglasBirthplace.org website. I'm actually finishing the brochure right now that we have in progress. So again, it's just a continuation of this project that we started before the two-hundredth anniversary of Douglas's birth.
Okay, okay, great, great, good job. Go ahead, Clay.
Yeah, so it's just kind of flowed this way, which is fine. So we've had, we actually have the first grant that I talked about, the hundred thousand dollars, and Cassandra mentioned that hers is for fifty thousand dollars, same request.
Right.
And so if the council would like to take both of those items together and ask questions, you could do it at one.
I'll make a motion to take those requests together.
I'll have a second.
DeVilleo, I'll second.
Okay, all right, Madam Secretary, so we've got a motion to do both of these requests at one time, that would be great. So could you, could you, could you call the roll?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Leshaw?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
All right, thank you, council, thank you, Preston and Cassandra, for the good work, I really appreciate it, and I think, Preston, you need to do this last one here, Madam Secretary.
So, yeah, let me just, if you may.
No, I'm sorry, Clay, I'm sorry.
It's okay. The next item I have is a request from the Department of Public or Department of Parks and Recreation to extend the current contract for bid number seventeen-sixteen grass cutting services for the parks, ballfields, and landings. And again, Preston is here to answer questions, in the amount of forty-one thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars for the two thousand and twenty-one season, which is the same price as the two thousand and eighteen cost.
So, Preston, you having pretty good luck with him?
Yeah, Riverside's been, has been really good to deal with, they've actually, and if there's anything above and beyond, like if they come across a tree down in the park the day they're mowing, they have no problem getting rid of that tree at the same time and doing any kind of, you know, anything along those lines, they've been real receptive and open to doing that kind of stuff, so they've been a real asset to the department.
That's great, that's great. Okay, council, anything else from council? Okay, Madam Secretary, could you, could you, I'll call the, could you, there's a motion, do I have a motion?
DeVilleo, make a motion that we accept Riverside, accept date number seventeen-sixteen.
Okay, I have a second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Could you call the roll, Madam Secretary, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Leshaw?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Next item I have is a request from Department of Parks and Recreation to extend the current contract bid seventeen-seventeen for portable sanitary chemical toilet service. Requesting council approval to extend a contract with Pearson Comfort Group LLC for the two thousand and twenty-one season, the amount of nineteen thousand, forty-four dollars and fifty cents for portable chemical toilets at parks and recreational locations.
Any questions, council?
No, I'll make a motion.
Okay, I have a second. Got a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Leshaw?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
And the final item I have is requesting council approval to partner with the Neighborhood Service Center on a federal grant application to the offer of juvenile justice and delinquency prevention entitled Second Chance Act, addressing the needs of incarcerated parents of their minor children. If accorded grant funds, the Neighborhood Service Center will provide transitional services for incarcerated parents and their children utilizing the National Fatherhood Initiative. No county funds are required, and I believe that Councilmember DeVilleo may have something to say on this matter. Mr. Callahan, Mr. Stan, I'm going to recede myself and step away while council considers this matter. I am a party to this grant with the Neighborhood.
this matter. I am a party to this grant with the Neighborhood Service Center, so I'm going to step away.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. So, Mr. DeVio, this is such a, Mr. DeVio, this is such an important ask. Do you want to comment on it?
Certainly. I hope Mr. Pack didn't go far, because I want him to hear how much I appreciate his work in this. And that's why I want to make sure that we continue this, so that he can continue to do the great work that he's been doing. It's no secret that the Neighborhood Service Center provides a lot of different benefits to the community to cover many different needs. And this is one that's extremely important, in my opinion. Family is very important. And when you have an opportunity to meet people together and just continue to work together to, through the difficult times, it's vital. And especially during the pandemic that we're having and all the other different things that are going on, it's been a grant that will allow us to expand services and continue it. So, I greatly appreciate the council's support. I believe I, I think we need Chuck and Laura. Did I hear that Mr. Lesher asked to recuse himself as well from this?
No, not from this.
Oh, okay. Okay. Sorry. We also have the, Ms. Neal online?
Yeah. Yes. Ms. Marilyn Neal is online. So, well, welcome. Marilyn, how are you? Can you hear us? Marilyn, can you hear us? Uh-oh. Okay. If you could turn it up. Can you turn it up just a little?
Yeah.
There you go. There you go. Yeah. Just a little closer. Yeah.
Okay. So, I just wanted to be available in case you needed any explanation on what I'm proposing for the partnership, if that would be helpful to the council.
That's fine. Absolutely.
So, I'm proposing, the Neighborhood Service Center is proposing to provide transitional services for incarcerated parents and their children by utilizing the National Fatherhood Initiative. It is an important and it's an informed fatherhood program that we will also work with parents, incarcerated parents as well through this grant. And our hope is to help parents, is to help work more effectively with fathers and mothers to raise their children. We will provide space for the program. Funding will secure staffing, equipment, the curriculum, and resources to create a child-friendly space and also entry to transitional services for incarcerated parents. The focus on parental responsibility. Our participants will receive self-sufficiency services offered through the Neighborhood Service Center, as well as our two-gen case management. And the program will run for 36 months. We hope to work with 24 incarcerated parents and 40 moms per year. And that's the, that's the purpose. I don't know if you need the background information on why we thought this grant was important. I do have a presentation that I had put together I can share with the council later.
That's, that's fine.
Answer any questions anyone may have.
Well, Ms. Neal, I can, I can tell you something from, from the council. We really appreciate everything you're, you're doing. I mean, you're such a vital part of families, getting them together, getting them help. So, we can't thank you enough, and we're, we're glad to help you. Okay? And any, anything that we can do to make your life better and make citizens better and these families better, you know, I'm all for it. So, I just really appreciate it. Council, any other questions? Okay. So...
So, I want a motion that we will partner, partner with the Neighborhood Service Center to apply for the grant.
Okay. So, I have a second.
I'll second.
Okay. Madam Secretary, we got a motion in the second. Can you please call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack? Oh, never mind.
Yep, he's gone. That concludes the county manager report. Mr. Council President, thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stan. Thank you, Ms. Neal. Appreciate you being here with us.
Thank you.
A lot. Thank you. Okay. Now, we're going to head to public comment. Mr. Doran, are you with us?
I am. Currently, we do not have anyone other than staff and contractors on the lines.
Okay. Does that mean they want to talk or not talk?
No one on the line that they wish to speak.
Okay. Okay. Well, that's, that's no problem. If somebody wants to talk, you know, we'll be a few minutes here with council comments, and we'll move on to that. So, council comments. Vice President Lesher, I'll start with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. At this point, I am little more than two years into this role on the county council. And in navigating the proprieties, the procedures, the legalities of this new role, my, my north star has been County Attorney Tony Cooper Smith. Tony can lay out in completely neutral terms the pluses and minuses, the way forward and the pitfalls over any decision with legal dimensions faced by the council. He also, in a similarly undramatic and clear fashion, can make it eminently clear when there is only one path forward. When passion resides, Tony can redirect toward a professional analysis of the situation. His clear, crisp, calm manner has kept this council in good stead. Sadly, when this anapologist left Talbot County and the ballot failed, that would have allowed the council to keep him on, we could not. But we, and I, owe him a sincere debt of gratitude. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Mr. DeVio?
That was very eloquent, and I unfortunately won't be able to follow it as well. Right on the same lines, I've always appreciated how I can call Mr. Cooper Smith, tell him exactly what I want done, how I'd like it done, how I'd like it written, and for him to very calmly say, no, we can't do that. But then, but then he's able to turn it right around and show me how I can do it and, and help me with that and guide me through it and explain why. So, then the next time I come to him with something outlandish, it's a little bit farther, a little bit closer, not as, as out far. I greatly appreciate the friendship that I have with him. The sailing reference, the North Star, that's awesome. You know, I, I wish I had a little bit more opportunity to get out on a boat and go sailing with him and do some fishing and show him around a little bit. But I, I'm glad he's not going far. The firm that's getting him is very lucky. He has been a great asset to me and to the county. And I look forward to his success there and then getting tired and deciding to retire back to Talbot County and fill in this void again. So, it's always an opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. DeVio. Ms. Price?
Thank you. Well, you know, the minute he came on board and I found out that he was a William Mary graduate, and that's where my son went, it was just this, you know, when you have a connection that way, it's just, it's just really neat. And of course, I knew that he just had the best education and could take such good care of the county. And being able to call him up and go on and on and on, and patiently, he would listen. And, but, but it is great to be able to, you know, get to the nuts and the bolts and what you can and can't do through the legislation. But he's been through a lot with us. It hasn't been the easiest of times. And to have a relationship where you can feel that you can talk to somebody and that they can also share back with the council members and just act like human beings with each other and, and friends and all of that is, is just a great asset. We have, you know, many people in the county like that. And it is really sad that we couldn't figure out, you know, that the, that the people couldn't understand that it wasn't a done deal, you know, that we would just automatically hire people from outside the county. We have a real gem in Mr. Cooper Smith. And it's, it's just a real shame that it had to work out this way. But I certainly wish you the best. I know you won't be a stranger. Certainly enjoyed all the years working together, and don't go too far away. Thank you so much, Tony.
Thank you, Ms. Price. I appreciate the kind words. Mr. Pack?
Well, this is a day that I saw coming, but I certainly did not relish it. I think a number of council members have already, already touched on the fact that when the ballot question was not successful to remove the residency requirement for the county attorney's position, I was very fearful that this day would come. I'm hoping that maybe the council in two years can put the matter back before the voters to reconsider that once again, so future councils won't come to this, this, this point. I've known Tony from the very beginning, when Mike Pullen was our solo county attorney for a number of years, myself and Mr. Hollis and a number of other people urged Mike to go ahead and bring somebody on board to help him. And he reluctantly did. And he could not find a better suited person than Tony Cooper Smith. Not just his legal mind, but also his temperament. He just, he just dropped right in line with not just Mr. Pullen's temperament, but also the temperament of this county government. It's a bittersweet day. I am happy for Tony and his family, that he gets to work close to the home there where he resides. I know he has two small children. He gets to spend more time at home with them. I know he's looking forward to that. But, you know, I'm going to miss working with him. I'm going to miss being able to sit there in his office and not just talk about legal things or bills or resolutions and those kind of matters. We'll just talk about matters of life, about raising the family. And I'm just going to miss those, those moments with him. But I certainly wish him well. I know, as you said, that the firm that is going to has a gem in, in, in Tony will certainly be missed. And it's going to be a void that this council is going to have to try, try some way, try some way to fill. You know, we lost Mary about a year ago down in Dorchester County, and now losing, now losing Tony seems like just, you know, two punches, two punches in the gut. So, Tony, I wish you well, man. Keep in contact as much, as best you can. And again, happy travels.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. Tony, I'm, you know, council, council obviously is going to miss you. I, I've, I've enjoyed in the past six or seven years with our conversations and sort of learning from you. And, you know, the last couple of years, we've been all working pretty close together. And, and I, and I, I'm truly happy for you. I feel like, you know, this is another, another step in your life. And, and, you know, you know, you're, you know, you're feeling things out. I know we've talked a couple of times, and you've created a beautiful family. And, you know, you're, you're ready for the next, next, next step. I know, I know it was kind of unexpected, and we didn't want you to leave. But I, I can say it's probably happened for a reason. And, you know, you've got, you've got a bright future in front of you. And that firm has got a bright person. And I, I give, I give you a lot of credit, because I know it's been tough on you. It's been a little bit stressful. You've been outstanding in the last several months, being open to us and helping us understand where you're at. And I really appreciate the honesty that you've given us and the dedication that you give us. And the, the trust, you, you have such great character, and you should be proud of that. And your family should be proud of that, because I'm, I'm sure proud of you, because it took a lot to come to us and tell us, you know, what you were doing, what you were feeling. And, you know, unfortunately, the voters might not necessarily, you know, understood that vote, you know. But like Mr. Pack said, we might want to try to do a little bit better job on our part next time on this vote. But if it's anything that we can do for you, you've helped us through so many things. You've kept me out of jail a lot here, I believe, in the Opens Meeting Act. So, that was, that's great. You've helped me out, you know what I mean? So, but anyway, all kidding aside, I really, really appreciate all that you've done for council. And we couldn't ask for a better person for that job. And good luck with everything, and please keep in touch. So, being that, you know, I, I didn't know if, if, you know, anybody else wanted to say anything. I know it's council comments, but, you know, Clay, did you, would you like?
Ms. Connor, I just wanted, I think Patrick's going to say.
Yes. Absolutely. Absolutely. Yep. I, I just seen that. Patrick, are you, are you with us?
Well, before you, before you call Patrick, let me just also chime in and say, I miss, I'll miss a really good partner. In my previous role, there were a number of times that we worked together. And certainly in the last three months, I've, I've depended on him greatly. He's a, he's a top-notch individual. He's a quality person. And, you know, he's done a great job, and he, he will be successful in everything he does, I have no doubt. And you will be missed.
Thank you, Mr. Stan. Thank you. Patrick, how you doing?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. 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 So, you, you ready, you ready to be at the helm here?
I am, yes. We're, we're honored to be of service to the county, and we're excited for the opportunity.
Yeah. Well, we're, we're excited, we're excited to have you. And we really appreciate you jumping in that spot and helping us out. And I don't know about council, and I'm, I'm sure they're going to say the same thing. I'm excited to, I'm excited for, for you to come aboard and to work with you and try to keep us in line and learn from you, you know?
Heck, yeah. It's a tough act to follow.
And it's, it's a tough one. It's a tough one, you know? So, and so, Tony, I'm going to leave it up to you. You got, hopefully you got a little tear in your eye, you know?
I do. I do.
Okay?
I've got a whole shirts, whole shirt sleeve here.
I got you. I got you, man. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank, thank you all so much for the, the kind words. It's been an honor to serve as county attorney. And I, as I've told some of you, I first fell in love with Talbot County when I was a boy, competing in junior sailing regattas on the Miles River and the Tred Avenue River. And coming from the western shore at that time, my fellow Annapolis sailors and I thought we were pretty hot stuff. And we may have been, but more often than not, I found myself trailing behind local eastern shore sailors, puzzling at how they had managed to get to the front of the fleet. But later on, as a, as a teenager, my father and I would come out to the shore with his prized bird dog, who also, let's be honest, was his favorite child. He's ducks, geese, and all kinds of waterfowl. And it was really those memories and, and those experiences that led me to take the clerkship position in 2012 with Judge Bo Ernest in the circuit court after graduating from law school. And my office was right upstairs outside the judge's chambers. And from time to time, I'd leave late at night, and I'd walk past the Bradley meeting room, and the light would be on in there. And the place was full of people, and everybody was intensely focused up on the dais where the county council was. And I, I would wonder what all that fuss was about. But little did I know, at the time, I would become intimately familiar with the county, the council, and all the excellent men and women who serve as department heads, staff, and volunteers on our boards and commissions. We have so many excellent people who work here. And that's one of the things that just makes this so enjoyable and so bittersweet in taking this next step. makes this so enjoyable and so bittersweet in taking this next step. Fast forward to today, after I started with Mike Pullen, eight years later, now I look back, and I can confidently say that I've thoroughly enjoyed my time with the county. I've learned a lot from each and every one of you, and I only hope that my contributions as a public servant have started to repay my debt of gratitude to you all for giving me this opportunity to serve. So, I'm just working with all of you all on a daily basis, but I do look forward to staying in touch personally and professionally as I make this transition. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you, Tony, for those kind words, and you're going to be missed, but you're going to be, you're a little bit of, a little bit of you is always going to be with us here, that's for sure. So, okay, Council, all right. Anybody have anything else for us? Okay. So, Mr. LeShir, you want to bring us on home, Vice President? And...
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Will do. The County Council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 23, 2021, beginning at 6:00 PM. The Council will be convening an open session at 4:30 PM and immediately adjourning into closed session to discuss real estate, legal, and personnel matters, matters as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. The Council will be holding a virtual budget deliberation on Thursday, March 11, beginning at 4:00 PM, which is open to the public. Information on how to access Thursday's budget deliberation via WebEx will be made available on the county's website at www.talbotcountymd.gov. Therefore, there are motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene as noted.
So moved.
Madam Secretary? Yep. Sounds great. Madam Secretary? Can you call the... Madam Secretary, could you call the roll?
I'll call the roll. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Yeah, aye.
Mr. DeVillio?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. LeShir?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a great evening. Appreciate everything.